Who are online and joining us for this next exciting edition of the Weaver County Work Session.
Exciting.
It's exciting. Today is Monday, the 5th of August. Only two more days to the Weaver County Fair, running the 7th through the 10th, 11A to 11B. What a great experience that is. We hope that you choose to come out to the fair. Our first action item is a discussion or action approval of minutes for the commission work session held on July 27th.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, a motion carries. Thank you. Item two is a discussion regarding indigent cremations agreement of renewal. Jason Horn, Matt Clements, Brian Barron, and Lauren Thomas. Now, I don't see Lauren here.
Lauren is in Hawaii. She's decompressing after taking the bar exam.
Did she pass the bar?
Won't know until September.
Oh, oh, a little early, a little early to celebrate the passing of the bar.
It was, it's always a traumatic experience. You gotta let the brain heal a little bit.
Get some brain cells back, right?
Yeah.
That's terrible.
Jase, go ahead.
Alright, Commissioners, I did see Commissioner Bolus in the hall. She was on her way out, so there about. But there was, there was an email that was sent to all three of you. Sure. That talks about this indigent cremation. Essentially what's happening is the contract came due at the end of June, and we have a little bit of, it's 45 to 60 days where we can figure out how to renew this. So in that email, I talked about the current agreement and what that looks like for the future if we go off of the agreement may be extended for an additional five years. And then I added some other information in there as well as just some quick math on what the county is paying annually on years where we see a lot of indigent cremations versus years where we see less. I will add to that email that I'm all about competitive bid processes. I'm all about keeping things fair and equitable and so forth, as you know from other things that we've done together.
How you are great at your craft as well.
Thank you.
He's alright.
However, I will add to this that something that wasn't really spelled out, and that is we've actually met with the current provider, which is Levitts, multiple times in the last five years, where we've come together and we've worked out some things because at times it's been a little bit challenging. They need to leverage on things where they can't collect money from next of kin or whatever it is. And so there have been times where we've met together and we've kind of reviewed and changed terminology so that it makes sense not only to those who are in the agreement, but to the, just the general public. I'll get phone calls and other people will take phone calls where they want an explanation of how the actual process works. So with that said, that's why I'm favoring just extending the contract by five years because of the time that we've spent with Levitts. And then the other reason is I did a little bit of research and the county is paying substantially less for these services. The further south you go, the more expensive it is. And I was able to see Davis County's agreement and a couple of other agreements and verify that even with the same companies that were currently, or the same company we're currently using, they're charging Davis County and other counties more than they're charging Weaver County. So it just doesn't make sense to put this out because it'll probably double or triple in price. That's just where we're at.
Remind me again, we renewed that, what, like four years ago? We talked about this or?
Uh, no, we put it out five years ago.
Alright, five, alright.
And then it comes, it came due, and now we have this extension that we can do.
I know, but tell, what was the amount?
So the amount the county has been paying for quite a while, over five years, is $325 per person.
I was gonna say 300 bucks, I think.
Now, that's gonna go up a little bit because we're going out of contract.
Okay.
And I don't want to discuss that price right now in case you guys say that I need to put this out to bid. That, we need to keep that fair for anyone that's gonna compete against that group, but I know what the dollar figure is moving us into this next five years if you guys approve it. And it is still less than Davis County, for example, and far less than Utah or Salt Lake County. So there will be a little bit of bump just because everything's expensive. But it's, it's gonna still be pretty low, all things considered. So that's where we're at. And so that's something that I would bring to you guys in the commission meeting. We're gonna go two times. Get that signed off on just once.
How many do we do a year?
So it varies. When we did the math, we had, there was between 12 and 15 on it. And I hate, I hate saying this because it sounds harsh and terrible, but on a slow year where we're not seeing the number of deceased, it's 12 to 15. On a year like COVID, it's over 25.
Okay.
So on average, we're hovering between like 17 and 20 some odd.
Okay. Okay, so we're talking six to 10 grand.
I mean, in the email, on low years, it's about 12K annually. On high years, it's about 25 to 30,000, what the county's paying. Any questions, concerns?
I don't have any answers to my questions.
I'm good.
Okay, so you can expect to see this either in the next or the commission meeting after this one. If you have questions at that time, feel free to ask, but I'll prepare this the way it needs to be.
Week from tomorrow or the next week after that. Okay, very good.
Do it.
We're good. Thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You could fill that up, take more. That may be in order.
Yep. I've only got just the right amount.
Thank you though.
It's good.
Yeah, it's a good shot.
Great.
Well, come again.
Try not to talk with my mouth.
Thanks. See you tomorrow, if not sooner. Appreciate it.
Okay, great. Alright, our next item is a discussion as we clear the room and bring more in. The next is a discussion regarding the fire station improvement in Old Town Eden. We'll wait for the next group to come in. Okay, well, we're back and we're on our commission work session for Monday, the 5th of August. We have with us today the the fire station. This topic is the fire station improvement in the Old Town Eden. Gary Myers, why don't you go ahead and start with this?
Sure. I think it's labeled as Station 63, is that right?
62.
62.
Well, we also want to mention Britt Clark, Mark Lund.
Mark's not here.
Yeah, I see that. Dave Reed that are here.
Dave's here.
Yeah. So. Mark in Hawaii.
Anniversary.
Okay.
Oh.
Didn't answer my question, but we'll just go with that.
Go ahead.
Not, not Hawaii.
Chris, you know where I was going with that.
Yeah, thanks.
Go ahead.
So Commissioners, if you remember earlier this year, we designed, bid, and advertised our Eden Acres Storm Grain Project. Part of that project was intended, had, had we had an unlimited supply of money, which we don't, part of that project was intended to run a extension over in front of the fire station, Station 62. And so, however, due to budget shortfalls, we had to cut back in a lot of different areas on that project. And so we're getting it almost up to the station, but we're stopping what we figured, gentlemen, probably 200, 300 feet. I think it was closer to five or six, but we'll go with, we'll call it 500 feet short of the, of the station. And so the reason that's an issue is the station has historically had a drainage issue in front of their station, so much so that historically they've, and Britt, forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn here, right? So much so that they've installed essentially a sump. Well, two sumps out there, two boxes out in front of the station for water to kind of capture, take it down, and percolate into the ground, which works great for most of the year. However, during the coldest months, when you need it the most, as the snow is falling and melting, it doesn't work and it freezes and it plugs. And essentially, it starts the whole process of, of what we call delamination, but essentially destroying the pavement there in front of the station. And so as we were talking about potential solutions and ideas on how to fix this, we, we the fire station, fire department only has so much money. And Britt, is there anything else you care to add to that essentially?
Yeah, well, I can kind of take it from what we're doing, why we're doing it, and kind of where we're at with that. And now you've got some pictures, just to kind of show you what we're we're up against. This is the first page is during the winter what we end up with, and our crews call it Lake 62, because that covers half our parking lot. And so whether, depending on the temperature, it's either a lake or it's an ice sheet. And so for years ago, we, we installed those sumps and they worked, but over time, more and more, our parking lot sunk a little bit. Roads got built up a little bit and more water drains into that parking lot area because it's kind of a low spot in the area. And so we're to the point where we need to fix it, and we're gonna fix it on our own dime. We're, we got about $100,000 to do all this. Clean those out, redo the parking lot, build it up, put gutter in, the whole nine yards, and we're good to pay for that. The one issue is, once we do, when we put gutter in, what happens to the road water? We're worried about it going to our neighbors, and that's kind of where we got the county to come in to see, hey, could we drain this down somewhere? Out somewhere, do something with it other than just sending it to our neighbors on the east or west. And that's kind of our, our position and where we're at right now.
Okay, and so what we, we looked at is the original plan was to take the larger pipe east to the station and get it out there in front of them. However, there's, there's a couple of different ways we can look at it. The larger pipe, more cost. We could look at putting a smaller pipe in. The need for the larger pipe currently is not there. We were planning on that just based on future growth patterns we're seeing in the area and knowing that you know, there'll probably be a larger need for, for more drainage up there than what there is. Currently, there is no infrastructure really in it to effectively deal with storm grain in the area. So it essentially is just kind of pushed or hurt it off to ditches where it can go to. Sometimes it doesn't even make it. Sometimes it sits in areas in low spots and depressions similar to Lake 62, and it doesn't drain. So we could get away with a much smaller pipe, and I came up with some prices, and we were looking right around 100,000. Does that sound about right, guys? I'd have to look at my numbers to.
100,000 more or 100,000 total?
100,000 more to run that pipe. I'm envisioning like an 18-inch pipe extending over there to.
Is that the size you need? Or is that the smaller one?
That's the smaller one. The size we anticipated was 36.
So that's big.
36 is big. It's big, it's big. But we did, we anticipated that because that's kind of how you view a master plan, so to speak. So we're trying to only do it one time. So you've got the park on one side. Yep. And then you've got the fire station.
Yep.
Going west, you've got a couple of commercial.
Yep.
Areas. I don't, when you say develop, I don't see a lot of other development.
They, they.
That's gonna take place. So when you say size to 36.
Great question.
That park's not gonna be developed, sorry. No, that's a great question, Commissioner. So we were looking at future development in the area. The area as a whole. So north and east and pretty much everywhere around there, where that is, is kind of a, kind of a area that as development, once, once it triggers, you're gonna see, you're gonna see a need for some sort of infrastructure to handle the stormwater. And so we were looking at it maybe a little bit global, if you will, or larger scale perspective to, to handle up that growth as it helps. So, yeah, we could size that down. We could go with a smaller butt. What area you talking about for growth? I'm still confused. North of the station.
North.
North, anywhere from the station north up to where the Lindsey ditch exists north of it.
They're even, they're even talking about, Gage, I know that they're talking about going clear up to that gun range up there eventually.
Okay. Yeah, we, we've got subdivisions being looked at north in those fields north of it. We, we see ideas all the time, so. So tell me where you're gonna hook in again. Where, so are there, where's our current termination? So our current termination is pretty much the east boundary of Valley Copy. From that termination point, our project takes a 90-degree bend and runs straight north through the lots up towards Eden Acres. We negotiated the right of way and everything with, with the other, the developers in that area. So the intent was to just go to that 90-degree bend where we're terminating right now and extend a, a line, so to speak, for the fire station to tie it to. So. And that's only 500 feet, did you say? Yeah. I can't remember exactly.
500-ish.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's pretty close. It's pretty close.
You think you can get that done for 100 grand?
Let me get you exact numbers, Commissioner. It was, it was somewhere right around there. It was not.
That's a lot more, well, of course, that pipe was bigger, a lot by the, out by the school out west.
Yeah, that was significantly bigger. That was 36 as well, too. So we're, we're going down much smaller than that.
What if you go to 24?
That'd be great.
Commissioners, as far as development goes, keep in mind that Sunnyfield has a development agreement with the county already.
Right.
Completely developed their frontage. There is a property owner who owns all three corners of the next block over. So what is that? Is fire, fire station on 2500? Is that right?
I think so.
I think so. Anyway, so the next street up, you've got those two streets framing a block. That whole section there was rezoned and formed base last year. And so you can see another four or five, maybe even buildings there. So I, I, I'd plan on probably a good two solid city blocks, city, quote unquote, blocks being developed over there.
Okay, makes sense.
My only request is you fill them with people from California.
That's, that's where I don't come.
Put a residency restriction on, on title.
Yeah. And we did restrict that.
Yeah.
If you're not from California, you can't buy.
Well. You know, we're always usually pretty friendly with our first responders.
So give me the amount again, if you wouldn't mind. I just measured it in geogism as we're talking, just under 450 feet of pipe.
Well, I think before we make a decision, maybe you're all different on this, Commissioner, but I'd like to get some more solid.
Exact numbers, yeah. And I, I thought I had those with me. I came up for a couple of other meetings earlier than this and thought I'd grab them and left them downstairs.
If there's, and if there's a way to with some of those others starting to be able to capitalize on that, could we do a pioneering agreement so we could re- and coop, we coop the money?
Yeah, we've got storm grain impact fees, right?
Okay. We do, it's not our budget. We're kind of zeroing out the account of the storm rate impact fees to do the Eden Acres project. So we're spending essentially all of it.
I'm not negative on that, if I recall, right now.
Maybe. On storm grain? I think we, I think we still had some stuff, but I don't think we were going over.
Okay.
I might be off, but pretty sure we didn't go over.
I maybe think in the west, sorry.
Yeah, correct. West, west sewer, we are negative, but that's, but there's pioneering agreements on that one.
If we were to say that this is a project that the county is helping fund upfront, that storm grain impact fees from that area needs to go back to pay that back, that would essentially be the pioneer agreement. We just need to, I don't know if that's a pass a resolution or what it is, we would need to do to make sure that we're tying that money specific for those projects or those.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see, Mr. Chair. Is storm impact fees, and then anybody that, those eight or 10 businesses you just talked about should pay into that.
Yep.
I, I agree. I, I'd like to see some numbers based on the 24.
Yeah.
But in concept, I'm okay.
There, you get what you need. Huh? Okay.
Okay. I'll get you some exact numbers. I'll shoot off an email to everybody, and I apologize, I didn't have those with me. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
We'll forgive you this time.
Anything else?
Nope.
Hats off to Gary. Looking at potentially as far as master planning and looking to the future. Everything we're looking at installing complies with the street cross-section of the form base zone.
I went away three lines were there, okay. Yeah, we figured if we're gonna put this in, we're gonna put it in once so that it stays in and it stays in permanently.
I like that idea.
So that's a good idea, Gary.
You'll see the, the drain lines go in a nice spot. As far as sidewalks and bike lanes and stuff like that goes, that'll be way down in the future.
Yeah, okay. I like it.
Very good. Lovely soft touch you made, right?
Yeah. Thanks for helping us make our neighbors happy. But yeah, we'll work with you on getting that all set up, and we'll find our part and.
Great. I'd like those motorized boat, like the little remote control boat races out there on your lakes.
So, so I worked out there. This is bad, it's on the record. I worked out there as a paramedic when I was at Ogden, when we used to co-man that station.
Uh huh.
We'd. But we'd.
Not in photographs, but of people and their character as it's related to those who may be potential. Uh employees in Weaver County. Now I mentioned that because I know that you take pictures. I didn't want you getting too. Yeah, we have Emily Wild, the Director of our Human Resource Department. The Ambassador of Enthusiasm, Cortland Erickson, and Chris Crockett who's here. So go ahead.
So here is a copy of the draft policy. I sent you over an electronic copy as well last week. So I don't know if Portland or Chris, you won't want to know you guys have looked at it. So. I'm going back to our discussion with the background check. So I put together this policy um. And I also did some more research into some third-party vendors. And turns out that that is actually probably going to be more expensive. And I think the best route to take for departments is going through BCI. It's a lot cheaper through BCI. And the only option to do fingerprint-based checks, which like the CJC and the Health Department. Require or even some that deal with, you know, children or the vulnerable population is fingerprints and BCI. That's the only agency you can do fingerprint-based checks with. Um and then third is it's an immediate turnaround. So once we get the name of the employee or the volunteer. We put it in their system and we get an immediate, you know. History if there is a history. So versus like using a third party, not only is it more expensive, they don't do fingerprints. And it's a like one to two day turnaround. So I think BCI is the best option. Moving forward. So this policy was written using under the assumption that we will get approved through BCI. To do their background checks in behalf of the counties.
Great.
Um so.
How do you feel about that? Yeah, we've got good luck with BCI.
I think so. Um. Just a couple of things to note with the policy. So um we will. So I have excluded a couple departments. From doing the background checks. That would be the Sheriff's Office and other criminal justice positions. Um the County Attorney's Office, um as well as the library. So um specifically with the library Linda asked to be excluded, they're doing their own background checks through BCI. And so she asked to be excluded from.
I I think from the policy right now, I'd be okay with that, knowing where the board and everything else. But I I think I'd like the option to be able to revisit it again. In the event that even possibly a director changes or something like that down the road. If you're okay with that. So I just wanna be able to.
Why did we exclude the sheriff?
Yeah.
So the the sheriff and other criminal justice positions, so they do a they do a huge deep dive into background checks. This is like a name-based search or a fingerprint-based search and they do. You know, I mean, they do a lot more extensive.
Now, look, one other thing, I know the people out of the Golden Spike. They're gonna put them in a concession stand. They're gonna put them out on the grounds, shovel and stalls and things like that. Hey, I don't want to cut off their ability to be able to hire. You know, uh with all due respect, I know that some of the people that I work with. With another hat on, who may have a felony, work for a particular local organization that many of you frequent. Daily for a cup of joe or 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 or. Yeah, something like that. So, I mean.
So so two parts to the answer that question. So first of all. With the background check, if you look in Procedure A two and there's A through K. So these are the types of positions that we would do background checks on. So it's on the very first page. So if they don't fall under these types of positions, we would not even do a background check on.
Okay.
Um second of all, if you look in the policy, um it's. The background check process B going down to. Items F criteria determine if an applicant will be selected.
Yeah.
So again, we'll look at. Like the number of concerns, the nature, the length of time, the type of position relative to the concerns. So for example, if somebody has on their background a DUI, but they don't drive. For the county, then that would not stop them from being eligible to be hired. In certain positions because they don't they don't drive equipment. There's nothing there that would. So it would be relevant to the job and the nature if something was to come up.
Similar to an issue we had a couple of weeks ago. That was it directly related to the job.
Yeah.
Which I'll give you guys an update tomorrow on.
You would that be a closed session after?
Yeah, it's on the commission.
We'll talk about it now. I don't see see a stall shoveler here being.
Right, no. So so that would be that would be a position that we probably wouldn't even do a background check on now. Maybe your positions at your parks that, you know, are holding.
Maybe a box office coordinator or someone who's handling money or something like.
Yeah, or if they're, you know, maybe at the OCC if they are handling like. The groups of children that come in and do the events we would, things like that.
I don't see any issue with this. Commissioner Faur, what are you on this? Hi, it's very well done. Looks to me like you got your bases covered. Except for how the print appeared on page two.
It's a stapled backwards, sorry. It's upside down.
But we can also, if there's a position that we didn't think of, you could consult with the department head and. Because of these particular concerns with this position, we can go ahead and do request a background check. On this application, um that's or this job opening that's going out.
Correct. So we we list that in the policy. So we can add a position to the background check after consulting. So myself and the. You know, department head will would consult. If it's like a new position, one that we have concerns on, we can consult and add that to do a background check.
Sure.
So.
That works.
Um then just one other thing. So I talked to Rod just to make sure. So the Friends of the Board, so all of their volunteers. They will continue to do their own because they're they're volunteers. They do it. So when we, when it comes to like the CJC, we would do it for employees or interns. That Rod hires, but the volunteers that the Friends of the Board do, they do their own and they would they'll continue to do their own.
Makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense.
So question.
Yes.
What if we list those job openings once a week or whenever you post them? Would it be possible when they get posted to have you put little notation, background check required or?
Yes, so and we've already started doing that. So my team's already started doing that. So all of the positions. So what we're, let me back up. What we're gonna do is reach out to all of the department heads. And they need to give us the list of all of the positions that fall. Under these, you know, A through K criteria that we do background checks. And then on the posting, we will put a little note that says, you know, s- subject to background check.
Right.
And then that will also be added added to the offer. So when they are extended an offer. They'll get the offer plus an authorization form that authorizes us to do the background check. We do the background check and then um you know, offers contingent on passing the background check.
Yeah, so I can see that serving two purposes. First off, if you get somebody that. Knows they're not going to meet a background check, they may not apply, which saves us time. The second part of that, then it gives us some assurance that if they have it, they can't come back and say. Well, you never told me there's gonna be a background check. So I just think the more information we can say, look, you applied for this and said here, background check. So, you know. Get off my back. We're not through the back. Or you can, you know, not take the job.
Yeah, that's another option that could be considered.
Could be considered.
And if they.
Yes, it would be.
And if they choose not to sign the consent, then um we we basically see that as they're refusing. You know, and and they no longer become considered for the position, right?
That's, I just wanna make sure we're covered there so we don't get into legal issue. For our great legal staff that are wasting time with somebody saying, look, you never told me that. I'm not gonna sign this and you have to consider me. And oh, by the way, I've got a friendly attorney, so we're gonna sue you for discrimination.
Right.
Seems like anybody can do that in the day's world for some reason.
Yeah.
Not exactly sure why.
I don't either.
Yep. So BCI has a form. So once we get approved, we'll we'll vet out that form, make sure. That, you know, legals and that form, they will then sign with the job offer.
Okay.
Okay.
Or volunteer application because it has.
You must feel pretty good about this.
I do. I I do feel good about this, yes.
I do too. Your recommendation that we would adopt this.
Yes.
So doesn't this need to be placed on a formal commission agenda to adopt that?
Yes.
Okay, so a week from Tuesday or a week from tomorrow.
Yes.
Or whenever you feel like it would be ready to go.
Okay, it's been reviewed through legal and the Policy Review Committee, so.
And Cortland and Emily are gonna work on updating an ordinance.
Yes, we will have to update an ordinance to get with BCI and fill out an application with BCI. So we've still got a little bit of work on that end. Um so.
Okay. Perfect. Any questions, Commissioner Faur?
Great work. Great work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I like it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, when you guys are done, let's go over the ordinance next.
Okay, Commissioner Faur. It's that time again.
Two o'clock.
Uh huh. That's what I meant. This is a discussion regarding parking fines. We'll have a presentation by Sean Wilkinson, William George Ross. Cortland Erickson and Sheriff Arben. Uh Christie, if you're out there and Sheriff Arben's here, would appreciate him coming in. Thank you. Hey, didn't we get an email from your buddy Barber up in the valley?
I may have. I don't know. Maybe he just sent it to you.
Maybe.
I don't remember seeing it.
You know, I'm the like life nicest one in the whole group here.
I'm sure it wasn't very.
There it is, right here.
What'd you say? That's it?
Sharon Gage Jim.
Well, that's an old one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Today?
Yeah, this is one that's just came. It's twelve eighteen.
Oh.
Okay. Yes, this is ingenious.
I don't think that's going to handle it.
Yeah.
About the scales. Whether or not you're going forward, all that gets us. We need to.
You're not gonna get a price there in a week.
Yeah, but I think we can just do the hundred and sixty pound, just because it's gotta be.
Old cars driving.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna reply all. Thanks for letting us know. Hey, Jessica.
So what have we got? When's our schedule at the fair?
Well, we've got a lot of things going at the.
That's what I'm asking you. It's your portfolio.
Well, I got meetings at ten starting. That's but but there's meetings before the meetings.
Unwasting?
Uh huh. What is we got on the fair? What is that?
I thought we said we had something tomorrow.
Yeah, we got some come tomorrow. We got that.
What's that?
Well, we got the, we're gonna be doing the funnel cake contest. Remember Sharon wanted to do a funnel cake eating contest? Tell me what this. Sharon's the fun one. You and I are the fun suckers. Yeah, we're the fun suck.
Funnel cake eating contest?
Yeah, tomorrow. Come hungry.
Cortland will proxy for you.
Cortland, you like funnel cakes?
Yeah, I was about six feet in here.
Funnel cakes, Cortland.
You're riding a little scooter bike thing without a helmet.
You're sure kidding. You're not a kid. You know why? As a cowboy will tell you, when you get on the back of a bull. The cowboy hat gives you more protection than does one of those hard helmets. No, that's what I used to hear all the time. No, yeah. Yeah.
I wouldn't make it.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
I, listen, Chris, I was riding a bicycle long before they invented the helmet. I just haven't learned.
You gave a mighty fine wave though.
Oh. Well, it's important that we learned back several years ago when we were with Bronco. It's important to wave to people.
Commissioners, he'll be here by two thirty.
Great, we're gonna go ahead without him then on this. I.
Yeah. Parking?
Yeah, let's move ahead then without him. Thank you.
So Commissioners, a few weeks ago, you had asked us to live into. What we would need to do to increase parking fines around.
Right, from holiday to holiday is I think the.
Yes, that's right. So we had a discussion with the Attorney's Office. And Cortland has pulled up our ordinance that. Gives us what we can do with these fines. So it says. Any person who violates the provisions of this chapter shall be liable for a civil fine. If the fine is paid within fourteen days from the date of the notice of violation. Or if the citation is contested with a hearing officer within fourteen days, the fine shall be fifty dollars. If the fine is not paid or contested within fourteen days, the fine shall be increased to a hundred dollars. So that fifty is the max that we charge for a parking violation. Hundred if they don't pay within fourteen days, but that's it. So that's as high as we can go per ordinance.
You said two things.
Yes.
That's as high as we can go or we go. And then you said it can go. We can't.
We we can go. So if we were to amend the ordinance, we can do that.
Yeah.
As as it's listed right now, we couldn't go up there right now and charge someone more.
We understand that. And this is likely a solution for next year, isn't it, Gabe?
That's how I see it, yeah.
So yeah, it's a simple ordinance change.
Great.
If you choose to.
But I would break it up by time of year or whatever else you wanna do.
We want it. Go ahead. I'm gonna let you speak to this. I have my own thoughts.
Well, I'm just, I think it's pretty simple. Yeah, I don't I don't think we change it now. I mean, I don't, we don't make it. That it goes into effect immediately because you're kind of halfway, you're halfway or more than halfway into the season.
Yeah.
But I think it makes sense for the future.
We only got another month.
Yeah, yeah, you have till Labor Day, then we're done.
Right.
So I think we look at this and then have some time to have Jessica put it on social media.
Yeah.
So we don't get accused of, hey, you're, you know, abusing us poor people that you don't wanna park here behind you.
It'll take fourteen days or fifteen days after you pass it. You're going to affect and you're gonna have to do two readings on it anyway.
That puts us there anyway.
We're there. Question though is, and I was talking to some of the staff, just calling them. People just see this as a parking entrance fee. You have six buddies in a car. They're just gonna split it.
Ten bucks apiece.
I suggested, I said, well, what if it was a hundred bucks just to some of the staff? And they said, it's not high enough. But that is not for me to decide. They thought that you're still gonna have the same problem, but maybe you just do it incrementally.
That's, we may have to, but I'd rather do it in gradual steps rather than.
And I don't think there's any other options like towing that. Well, and maybe you'd have tow truck companies just lining up to. Uh. Enforce that, but it's like, how heavy-handed do you?
Yeah, I, listen, what are you, what are you thinking?
Well, I don't, I don't wanna get into towing. To me, that's kinda just.
That's Davy, that's Davy Rat, that's.
Yeah.
New Year, Christmas Eve.
Snow basin.
Yeah.
That's extreme and, you know, we need to alert our Ford service partners and make sure they're aware of it. Um.
This gives us through the, I'd like to enact so that it goes into effect by Memorial Day of next year.
Yeah, that's how I.
And I, here's the way I'd like to see it. I'd like to see it to. Uh can I, you okay if I pull the trigger here already, my comment?
Go ahead. Yeah, you're the chair.
I'd like to double it. Hundred and for first offense. Second offense, double it again. Third offense, double it again. So a hundred and two hundred, the dude goes up there and parks again. It's two hundred and four hundred. And if he goes up there and parks again, it's four hundred and eight hundred. So he probably oughta have a different car.
He'll just take, he'll just trade off their friend's car.
Well, however you do it, but. Listen. Can we do that?
Do you wanna give the break if they pay it within fourteen days?
I don't even know if I wanna give it the break.
Well, that's just kinda what I'm. To me, a fine's a fine, but. I know why it's in.
I always just do the general county appeal procedure. It's just so they're not gonna get an automatic reduction for taking.
Right.
Advantage of that, so.
Yeah, the way it's set up right now, if they do, yeah, if they, even if they appeal. If it's within that fourteen days, they get the automatic reduction.
I don't.
No.
I'd rather almost go the other way and say it's a hundred bucks. If you pay it within fourteen days or fifteen days, it goes to two hundred dollars if you go past that.
That's what I was saying.
That's kinda what.
Yeah, you were saying a hundred and then two hundred.
Yeah, but the second offense is.
Two hundred.
Two hundred if you pay it within fourteen days and four hundred if you don't.
Yeah.
And then the the third offense is four hundred if you pay it within fourteen days or eight hundred bucks if you don't.
Yeah.
We'll probably need to think about. At what point do those drop off so that you reset back to the first offense? Like if you go maybe you say five years.
Oh.
Do you still, then we run into this issue with the Health Department with their tobacco violations. Yeah. Um. I don't know if you want a time limit on there when they, uh if it's with third offense or second offense within a year.
I like five years. Yeah, I'd like match the health. I mean. If the, hey, like, we we can go up the first time. It's only a hundred bucks, twenty bucks apiece. You know, let's just, I'm okay if this.
Can we track that?
I think it would just be, well, it's not a criminal.
No.
Citation, so it's not gonna show up on the driving record. But internally, I mean, maybe we could just see what kind of tracking resources we have.
Is the Sheriff's Office that would enforce it, right? It's.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to be us. It's either Parks and Rec or it's the Sheriff's Office. But because it's a county. Gotta be the Sheriff's Office. So, because we're not talking about people who don't pay that are parked in the parking lot. That's a. It's a different issue. This is like people parked on the road.
This is on the road, correct.
So does the Sheriff's Office already have a ticketing system in place? For something like this that they could transition this into?
That's, that's why we want.
Yeah.
Cause I don't even know. I mean, I assume we're collecting on these right now.
Yes, I believe we are. I don't know how many they cited this year. Maybe he's coming in at two thirty, right? So we can, we can ask him some of these questions.
Well, do you wanna just wait till he gets here?
We we could do that.
Forty dollars waiting on a dime, Cortland.
If, if you would like to saunter, I believe is the term you use.
Yes.
Um, I've got another issue I would not mind discussing with you. It's.
Would it be an open or closed session?
Closed. It's an administrative type issue.
What I'd like to do before we saunter is to motion to go to closed session. To discuss an administrative type issue.
I'd make that motion.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
I will go to closed session. Christie, if you wanna bring in a recorder. Uh or whatever, I'm gonna turn the audio and video off here. We're going into closed session for a minute. We actually don't need to record it because it's administrative.
You wanna motion come out of closed session?
We didn't go into closed, did we?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to come out of closed session back into work. Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're back into our work session. We're just gonna continue the discussion regarding parking fines around Eden. And so, we had the question for the sheriff. How do you maintain fines? How do you keep track of fines when people issue a ticket?
Well, it's just all digital, electronic, you. Find a violation, you go through the legal process to determine if violation occur and then. You ascertain if a ticket is proper and if it is, you. Get their information from the license plate, you leave it on the vehicle and that's pretty much how you do it.
Okay, that's great, got that.
Or if it's.
From there, though. Uh, what what happens at that point? Now the ticket's on the vehicle, now what happens?
Uh, nothing, uh, well, uh.
Where does it go? Does it go, what what involvement does your office have?
So it goes, it goes in our system.
Yeah.
Digitally, electronic.
Yeah, and now, and now the ticket, now that paper's on the window of the vehicle.
Hmm.
Okay, it's a parking ticket.
Parking.
And then, then what happens?
When the owner gets back to the car or the driver or the responsible person, they discover that it's on their vehicle.
Got that. Behind the scenes, who is responsible for keeping it? I mean, the the the. It's in the computer, but who says, okay, it's been this long, is it, does it go to the court or does it go to? Back to the, how does it work from there? Who keeps track of the money?
So we have our own work at the sheriff's office for these types of tickets through the county. Parking fines, one of our lieutenants is, uh. They call him a something, something judge, but they're not like a municipal judge or a district court judge and they. If they wanna contest it, they'll listen to it and then make a determination, but it's all in our system.
So what we've decided, what we're talking about doing is raising the money. The fine for the parking ticket between Memorial Day. Or the weekend of Memorial Weekend through Labor Day Weekend.
Memorial to Labor Day.
Uh-huh, the weekends, and the reason is, is. Uh, we, what we'd like to do is have that fine increase and so. Right now, we feel like people go up there and park and then. Five or six buddies will just get together and say, well, we'll just stall, it's it's the cost of parking. But if we raise the fine, the first infraction would be X. The second would, or infraction would be X times two, so they park on Memorial Weekend, they get a ticket. Costs them this much. The second weekend they park up there, it would be X times two. The third weekend it would be up there, it would be X times two, times two. So we just keep doubling it until they get the, till they get the message, we don't want you parking on the road anymore.
So, as you know, that when laws are created and and sometimes you you see it, won't see how effective they are until. After a period of time, i- if we, if we go down a progressive path of that. There should be a pretty good campaign, if you will, of putting that word out there, like, uh, during the early spring. The other thing too, um.
Excuse me, Jessica, did you catch that? You're the campaign gal, okay?
And then the other thing too is, uh, I wanna add to your your situation. Is if there's a vehicle that's blocking egress for emergency, we tow them. So they get the ticket and the tow, and the tow is a few hundred dollars.
Okay.
So, just just adding that in there, but we only tow if they're blocking, but if you got a parking lot that holds. Fifty spots and you got someone in there that's creating something else and whatever up on the grass or wherever. And there they get a ticket, we likely won't tow them. So.
What have I missed there, Chris? So we can, so really the the software, if if it's, if there's a license plate and you can you put, and they receive a citation. On Memorial Weekend and two weeks later, the state, they get another citation because they've chosen to park there again. Does this, will it, and?
Goes to the registered owner.
Yeah, but how is, does the software allow you behind the scenes to double that?
If if they pull it up, yes, if they pulled up, because usually when. When I was in patrol, a lot of patrol guys is, if we stop somebody, we look at past records to see if they.
Will it show that, will it show parking taken?
We can make it that way, yes. Um, one thing I would caution legal on is when I was in patrol. Ten years ago, the state, uh, passed a law. That we were not able to write parking tickets and leave it on the vehicle anymore. However, cities and counties could create ordinances that allow you to do that.
Okay.
So just be aware that, cause we were stopped because we had to hand the ticket to the driver, to the person, that's the. I mean, you you might have been in there at that time, so so just double check that, that our ordinance allows that.
It does say notice of violation shall be given by affixing a citation to a conspicuous place on the vehicle.
We're good then.
Or mailing it to be a registered owner.
Asphyxying?
Afixing.
Okay.
Not asphyxin. We're not.
Afixing, yeah, not asphyxiating, so, so, so. Would that be sufficient to just put it between the windshield wiper and the glass?
Yes.
Is that a fix enough?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The one question I have is if someone doesn't come in and pay their parking ticket, what's their remedy? Um, cause I, it's not criminal, it's civil.
The other thing too is, uh, you you know, some cities have attached it to a. A bill of some sort, David, I mean, there's a wide range of things that you can do, you could go, uh, for a warrant. For the arrest.
This is the county may use such lawful means as are available. To collect such fine along with court costs and attorney fees incurred in the collection process, so probably just send it to collections or.
Yeah, I bet that's what we do is, because we have the, I think it's Bonneville Collections or one on contract, we just start sending them to collections.
So how do we know? That they haven't just torn, somebody goes back to their car, they see their ticket there, maybe they've had a couple of broskies.
Or they borrowed their friend's car.
Or they borrow their friends, they just rip the ticket up, say they'll never come after me. Do we have ability to look through and say, hey, here's X Y Z ticket?
That should be in the code.
And, but do we have a system in place to do it? It's probably in code, but I'm wondering if we have the physical system. That something comes up and said, look, we're gonna red tag every fine that ha- every ticket that hasn't been paid within. Thirty days, whatever it is, can you pull that up?
Yeah. It goes to collections or alarm, there's something, there's alerts that say.
And it does go to collections automatically?
It can, yes.
Okay, maybe that's the reason we have the step. You know, we go one and then if it's paid like two weeks, then you go to the higher one.
The other thing I would recommend, if you're depending on especially the the amount of increase. That proper signage is posted too. Because, uh, you know, a lot of times, uh, cities that battle, um, uh, parking, winter parking. You know, the plows come through, they put these ordinances there, you can't park between. It's like, uh, November fifteenth and March fifteenth on the road, uh, people always. Like to give out warnings, uh, before that, so, and have proper signs, because in the city roads, you usually don't have that. Comes out in your your water bill or so- or some bill, right? But at least there ought to be a sign that says, this is the fine, here's the bill. Just, because if you don't have all that, there are more, you'll get more challenges in court on that.
Well, that shows we make sure those signs are all up to date. I gave Joe a couple other signs just a day or two ago, so. We'll wanna make sure through the winter time, is this a likely be enacted before Memorial Weekend next year?
Yep. So I would, I would consider a campaign of sorts, a messaging at least, uh, two months. Uh, uh, between the day of, into, past the holiday, but also up to two months before.
Here's the deal, is that a lot of these fines, I don't think are gonna go to Weber County, I think they're gonna be our Davis and Salt Lake County folks.
Quite a few of them.
Special.
I bet.
Do you want a geographic limitation or do you want to double parking fines through that period of time throughout unincorporated Weber County?
Geographic, you want it?
Well, oh, that brings up the point, because we talked about the summer, but we still have issues of Snow Basin. December, February.
Those, those places are a lot more successful now because we have a lot more interaction with the ski resorts and we work better together.
Okay, so you don't think you need them to?
Well, those are state roads, aren't they?
But those are state roads, we we step in, but yeah, we could send the troopers, but we we patrol up there, so. We just have a good relationship, that's better, and I think they've stepped up too on their markings.
Hasn't been a big bit, you know, I just, you start talking about emergency vehicles and. Some of those Saturdays, weekday, weekends up there.
It's true.
Narrowed down quite a bit.
Yes, you can.
But.
Are there other areas where we issue a lot of tickets? Do you think it'll?
Causey.
Well, I mean, um, so it's primarily recreational areas, I mean, you could say in designated recreational areas. The fines will double, and I just talk about the reasons why, in traffic congestion, safety issues. Or you could just have the fines double for that period of time throughout the year countywide.
Well, I, we have a problem other than, I mean, we're looking at Pine View, obviously for summer.
And Causey.
And Causey, Upper Valley, do we have issues in other areas through the summer that? You know, you could just make this Ogden Valley. Overly versus entire county, so.
Yeah, my suggestion would be, let's just attack the problem. Where we're getting it first and then have the ability to change it later. Cause a lot of those families up there in the valley depend on areas to park that are not so regulated. Right, they're really not a problem, but you know, you get that new deputy out there that wants to impress his sergeant, everybody's got a ticket. And so I just, my opinion would be, let's just do Causey and Pine View in that area. That is a suggestion.
I, I, well, to me, that's the only place, unless you tell me otherwise, where else do we have problems?
Occasionally, we get them up at the ski resorts, but that's when it's really bad snow.
Yeah, and again, Davies and, you know, that, you're you're gonna get the attention of the ski resort people with that, so. Yeah.
You might be able to add a provision that in certain circumstances. You can add a, a different type of, you can cite them under something else.
What I would do is separate out the geographical area. Um, with the increased fines, but you could do the doubling for first, second and third offenses, uh, overall.
I like that.
Or, or, you could do that.
I like that, if you're okay.
But the officer would have that discretion to double it, right? It's not automatic.
It would depend on how we write it in the ordinance.
Right, so I'm saying, I mean, I don't wanna say that the officers are selective, but you know, one of the the. Advantages that we have is discretion, right? Cause not every situation is exactly the same, we try, we handle them case by case, right? A- and and.
Go ahead, Paul. It seems like the discretion ought to lie in whether or not to issue the ticket instead of whether or not the fine should be doubled.
Right, that's fair.
But then, and then they could also tow if they're, if they need to get rid of.
Yeah, there's the two discretion, whether or not to issue the ticket or whether or not to tow, issue the ticket and tow. Two discretions there.
I agree with the sheriff, that measured approach, like just the recreational areas where we're having problems and then. Evaluate the ordinance maybe yearly and just to see if there's other complaints coming in from other areas. And then react.
See if we've got any other problem children out there.
Usually those people from the valley, their problem.
It is, yeah, well, some of those people come from Salt Lake and Davis. Other parts, yeah.
Okay, so that's.
Bison owners.
Uh, there we go, let's move forward with that, so we're ready to go with the campaign in March and. And the ordinance between now and then.
And, and, uh, Jessica would suggest that the. As a mental note, or you can write this down, is that this is about public safety, emergency vehicles, it's not, nothing to do with.
Yeah.
Uh, cause it's not, it's a problem that we have, it's just making sure emergency vehicles have access.
Well, public safety too. Yeah, as, you know, you get people on that east side of the road that have got three coolers and ten kids. You know, trying to get across on that road during, you know, a Saturday and Sunday, they could get hit.
That's right.
It's, so it's, to me, it's as much about public as it is the emergency vehicle.
Do we have a jake break ordinance? I think we do, I think you asked, or you asked us to make one.
Well, the guy that wanted that has moved out of the canyon.
He just sent me an email today.
So we got, we got another request.
Mike Bachman, no, it was, they didn't, they just said, sign Ogden Valley resident.
I thought we had. But anyways.
This is Mike Bachman, he moved out of the canyon, you guys know Mike.
Yeah.
Bachman's gone.
This was a guy that lived up in Eden or Liberty.
Somewhere up there.
Well, he was talking about.
He said all of, he wants all of the flat roads in the valley to have signage to say no use of jake breaks on any of the roads.
Did you say that now?
No, he, this is what this resident wants.
Oh, he wanted it.
Yeah.
There you go, your sheriff or your deputy could be busy.
Thank you.
Go find the truck that used the Jake Brakes a half hour ago. I, I don't know, I just, I get it, I understand, but it's such a hard thing to enforce.
How do you enforce it?
So if we have an ordinance and we need to put up signage, we can do that, but.
I've got Baron looking into.
I'm gonna just quickly search Jake Brake and Engine Brake, is there another name for them?
It's the same, it's, it's technically a engine brake.
Right, neither of those.
The old school term is the Jag, it's just easier to say.
Term showed up in a quick search of our. What's up?
Kind of noise.
Uh, we don't have a general noise ordinance.
All these ordinances are extremely difficult to enforce. So FYI.
Anyway.
We'll find out.
Yeah. Ryan will find the answer. Someone take notes of the decision that was made, um, what this ordinance should say, or.
Did we get a final number?
Yeah, well, unless you wanna propose something different.
No, I think we had it down.
Yeah, we double it.
Hundred bucks.
One, one and two, two and four, four and eight.
And then, we, do you want to define the geographical area?
I'm walking to the upper valley from now on.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, if they're out on the road and parking and they just wanna keep parking there to give us the finger, then. Let them park.
So Cozy and Pine View.
Yep, so we figure out a way to.
Time of year.
And Memorial Day through Labor Day.
Those are the three components as I see it.
Now you've got a tool, so if your deputies, if somebody's giving them a hard time, they got a tool, they could say, you know, thanks for your attitude, there you go.
Otherwise, it stays the same at fifty and a hundred.
If it's between.
Yeah.
Labor Day and Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But for the entire year, for the other parts of the county, the incorporated stays fifty and a hundred.
Unless you want to.
I don't, I, I don't see.
I, unless we start seeing issues somewhere else.
We just keep hearing about that Pine View, all and Cozy, all the time.
Yeah.
And especially if they're blocking Cozy Estates, those are all the time.
And then, um, probably just evaluate how many are outstanding and send them to collections.
We've got it shown, and we got it, like you said, that we got it signed really good, so that's gotta be signed.
We do, so we're also going to have that construction going on up at Cozy. That will shut down the reservoir and make push along people down towards Pine View, so we'll.
Next year, right?
They can also, they can figure out a way to get from the memorial up there.
So it'll likely be construction in twenty six.
Okay, as you, as you guys know, that when population grows, our county's increased about seventy thousand in the last twenty-ish years. The lakes have not increased in number.
Or size.
Or size, and as we know, that Salt Lake County does not have a recreational lake. If you wanna call it great Salt Lake one, neither does Davis.
Where Davis? You tell those people down there in Salt Lake that Salt Air is a beautiful place to rebuild.
And nobody drowns.
Yeah. Tell them to put the pool back in out there.
So, so I mean, this is, this will give us another tool, so it'll be helpful. Uh, for safety, so.
Yeah, yeah, I like it.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the item number, uh, five, sorry, we're a little behind, but now is the, sorry. Now we're on to the sheriff's office update, we have our great sheriff Ryan Arben here.
Welcome Sheriff. Thank you, I appreciate being here. All right, I'll just rapidly roll through this. We'll start with, uh, some good. Go to the middle and then end with some better.
All good.
I thought it was good, bad and ugly.
That's, yeah, it was what I remember.
I get the ugly part.
No, I, it's, I don't even bring out the ugly.
Oh, good. Well, I look in the mirror every morning, it starts that way, so it's good. Anyway.
Um.
It's all uphill from there.
Contacted Christie the other day and our, and I text everybody. Um, that, you know, that our presentation from. The, uh, border tour, it will be August twenty seventh at, um, it's invitation only. At our warehouse facility, we're anticipating a, a lot of people coming. Uh, the other thing that was really awesome is our drone team. Um, was invited to go down to Cochise, Arizona.
Is that August twenty seventh?
Tuesday evening, I think.
Right, six thirty.
And they took the van and they got, uh, witnessed all the technology that that sheriff's office has for the border. And it's amazing how many people are coming over the border walls lately. And we assisted them in their ops and have a lot of good video of what's currently going on down there, so. So it's very good, we got a great team, and then tomorrow, uh, Kyle Norfer's got that, uh. Volunteer of the Ward Search and Rescue.
Oh, yeah.
Presented tomorrow.
Yeah, all great.
Yeah.
During the commission meetings, that's wonderful.
Mark Corner and I will be there to present. Okay. Um, as I said I would, here is.
Still work for Continental? No. They're not even an airline anymore. Alaska.
Could be Alaska. Alaska.
Okay. Not that that will matter, but.
Can't get this picture to rotate, but you can look at, this is this morning's jail in the medical mental health, as you can see. Uh, they're overflowing into the hallways for their meetings. And, uh, as you guys know, the urgency of the medical mal increases all the time, this is just a picture from this morning. On that you can see there are several in the hall, there's one in the, uh.
Other room over there.
And then the two holding cells off to left are full. You can't really see everybody in them because of this, the view.
That's your mental health.
Yeah, we see, uh, anywhere between one hundred and thirty and a hundred and sixty a day in.
Yeah.
Wow, and we've got some amazing staff there. That are navigating all that. Okay, on to the really good news, oh wait, no. I got one other thing I didn't, I need to bring up, I think I talked to you, uh, Chris or Harvey, but not for. So, uh, we have to go into closed session. Uh, talk about property.
Okay.
Motion to go into closed session, so to discuss the purchase or negotiation of property.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Christine, we're gonna go into closed session.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, we're back on. Hit the mic if you would.
Yeah.
You're right, we're back on. No action was taken in closed session, go ahead.
All right, as you guys know that the Weaver County Sheriff's Office and staff have always putted the bill in the past to cover the security of the fair every year. And I've worked with Marty for a while and last year we came to a point where we would have to bill them. And we billed them and we got things worked out. This year, we committed ourselves, I offered it up to Marty and Duncan, that we would apply lean systems to this. And we went out there and we did a survey, we brought in our training, they, Jennifer sent our guys to some training on large events.
Yeah.
And, and so we took that, we took our lean systems. And this is, this is the message I got. For your meeting with the commission, in the past, we have run approximately seventy-five bodies over the four days. This year will be forty-five bodies over the four days.
A reduction of thirty-five, forty percent.
Not compromising security because of the technology we have and the strategies that we're using. We took out, for example, we used to be in charge of putting the parking lot together.
Right.
Right, we, we would have drink carts for staff and we took all of that stuff out and we're just running security.
Okay.
So.
Makes sense. That's great, thank you, that'll be, that's wonderful.
Marty, no, I'll buy in on that. Yeah, they proved that they would be Lieutenant Lably and the staff out there have been meeting regularly since the event and got this trimmed up. So there should be a substantial reduction in our cost to do the security.
Great, thank you.
So, and we're looking forward to the budget at the end of the year because you will see a totality of our lean system projects and the money that we saved.
Nice.
So.
Like that a lot.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Well, that'll be exciting, when are you going out, when you?
Thursday.
Let's just, if you were going anywhere to look at anything, you're going Thursday, thank you, that'll be great. Perfect. All right, is there anything else?
Can I help if you, for you?
Oh, that report on the fair is wonderful. We'll see you out there, I hope, are you doing anything over at the Riverdale Pavilion?
Yeah, we're doing our breakfast Wednesday morning with all the cheese, we do that every year.
Okay.
So.
Okay, anything for the daytime? You used to have Hammer.
Yeah, we used to do that, we think we did something last year, I don't know what happened.
I think you did.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'd like to support him, but.
Yeah, I'll let you know if we're doing another one.
Yeah, I just want to support. Okay, motion to approve, adjourn, not, yeah.
Approved?
Adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.